... meeting to order, will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, will you please call the roll.
Council Agency Member Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Self. White. Williams. Mayor Schneider.
Here. Okay, we have, oh, I need to get a proclamation. It must be in the other room. Why don't you, okay. If you could read number one and I'll...
Proclamation declaring September 2010 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery
Just give me one moment. I meant to bring it in with me. Good to see you, Wim. Hmm? Okay, thank you. National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, September 2010. Treatment and recovery improve the community's welfare and provide a renewed outlook on life for those who struggle with substance use disorders and for their family and friends. And the alcohol and drug prevention, intervention, and treatment service providers have a proud history of service, innovation, and dedication to the recovery process. Over 20 million people age 12 or older in the United States need treatment every year for a substance use disorder. And National Recovery Month celebrates the achievements of those individuals who have undergone successful addiction treatment and recognizes professionals in the field of addiction treatment. The 2010 National Recovery Month provides an opportunity to educate the public, community organizations, public officials, and civic leaders about the societal and economic effectiveness of treatment, as well as offering support and guidance to those on the path to recovery. And to help achieve these goals, Santa Barbara's Fighting Back, the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, Santa Barbara County Alcohol, Drug, and Drug Program, and other community providers invite all residents of Santa Barbara to participate in National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, which is in September. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim September 2010 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month and call upon the people of Santa Barbara to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting recovery in our community. We're doing this now because we don't come back to the middle of September, so we want to give you as much opportunity as a heads up. And thank you for all the work that you do.
Thanks.
Would you like to...
A few words? Good, thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Wim Verkayek. I'm the Director of Administration for the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, also known as CADA. And on behalf of all the community members supporting Fighting Back through its various steering committees, advisory boards, we thank you very much for this proclamation and declaring September as the National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. As you know, there are many community-based organizations active here in the city of Santa Barbara in an effort to build a safer and healthier community by preventing and treating alcoholism and drug abuse. And while we live in an absolutely beautiful, and all you gotta do is look outside today, absolutely beautiful community, under the surface, there are numerous adolescents and adults that reach out for help to get back to a clean and sober lifestyle. On behalf of Fighting Back, we would like to acknowledge the good work that's being done by such organizations as Casa Serena, present here, Sonoseca, Phoenix of Santa Barbara Rescue Mission, Sanctuary House, the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, and many more. And together with the many sober living homes, the calibration and partnership with the staff at ADMHS, Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Services, as well as many of you personally when we work with you, we look forward to welcoming all community members to participate in the many programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting recovery in our community during September and all year long. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any changes to the agenda?
Public comment.
Okay. Public comment, I have a number of speakers here. We'll have two minutes up on the podium. We have Kenneth Locke. And then, Shereen, did you want something in addition to your public comment, or was this... Okay, and you'll be next.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I was here last week talking about tennis and how it can now be understood as a basis of an intelligent relationship in relation to, I'm not sure if I got into it too much. Right now, tennis is one arm in competition. Relatively, holistically, it's not healthy, I'm sorry to say. The intelligent version of tennis that I'm bringing to the table, Tennesence, is actually the holistically healthy version. I'm hopeful that possibly somebody within the school system, Santa Barbara, has kind of foundation for what the information I'm bringing to the table here and can we can actually, they can actually apply it and actually have the kids apply it. The key to the kids becoming intelligent is that actually they require them to have intelligent means for becoming intelligent and then also reflecting their intelligence. I'm sorry to say that currently tennis is actually being recreated and promoted and supported as, again, a not intelligent means to an end. Doesn't benefit the community, I'm sorry to say. When it comes to, let's change the subject here, when it comes to the production of a product, I'm sorry to say that this community actually doesn't really have a product that it produces and it really doesn't understand the basis of efficiency, sustainability in relation to that relationship. And art in this community is, sorry to say, is it's the product of art as we know it right now in this community. It really doesn't provide the means for understanding efficiency, again, and worth and all that good stuff. But just thought I'd, just thought I'd come today and make this knowledge known. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen Catapush will be followed by Regina Ruiz.
Good afternoon. Since I was here, I thought I'd speak on a completely unrelated topic to Recovery Month, but thank you for your support for Recovery Month. For about five and a half years, I've been a member of the Community Garden at Pilgrim Terrace, and I just wanted to tell you how wonderful the Community Garden program is and how much I appreciate it and how it really does foster community. There are people there with their kids, there are people in wheelchairs, and there are seed giving programs, and we give our extra food out to people. And it's one of the really wonderful things for me about living in Santa Barbara, so I just wanted to thank you for your continued support of the Community Garden programs. I think they're really wonderful.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you. Regina Ruiz will be followed by Keith Whitney.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and City Council members. My name is Regina Ruiz, and I'm the co-director of Youth Center Media. And for those who are not familiar, we're a youth program who, we educate, empower, and rehabilitate at-risk youth through the art of filmmaking. And each year, our films are screened at the Santa Barbara International Film Festival. And today, we come to you with an urgent need. Due to the economy and local funders really cutting back this year, we are facing eviction at our studio located at the Westside Community Center. At any given time, we have between 20 and 30 students at that studio and currently have about 250 at-risk youth, including gang members, those at risk for gang involvement, involved in our program. So today, we'd like to open the dialogue and ask for your assistance to see how we can go about keeping our studio open and keeping this valuable asset here in Santa Barbara. And one thing that we've provided for you, I'm not too sure where they're at, but we've provided our documentaries for you to take a look at some of the work that we've done, some of the graphic design work that we've also done, along with about 25 letters from students asking to keep the studio open. So hopefully, we can begin the dialogue and find solutions to keep this valuable asset here in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Hotchkiss had a question for you.
Thank you very much. What do you actually need? Be specific if you could.
Well, specifically forgiveness of rent or donated space.
What's your rent right now?
Our rent is at 700.
700 a month?
Yes.
Okay, or do, how much space do you need?
We don't need a lot of space. It's about the size of a large classroom, about 400 square feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Whitney will be followed by the final speaker Nancy Duffy.
Hi, my name's Keith Whitney, and I'd like to give this to you people. This is a bogus police report. I went up to this man's house to retrieve a chair, and I was blindsided. I was hit by a two-by-four and hit in the head with a rock, and then I got a cracked This needs to be investigated because it's a false police report.
Okay, we can't respond to this right now at public comment, but we do have the copy that you have in front of us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Nancy Duffy will be our final speaker.
This is related, but these are for you. If someone can hand them to you, there's a packet for each one.
Give it to the clerk right here. There you go.
And this regards another police investigation besides Mr. Whitney's that is related, and this is to reopen the investigation of Marie...
You need to go into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. I ask you to look at these pictures and to call for an investigation, a reopening of the murder case. The first thing in your packet, you can see that there was an anonymous letter that came in the U.S. mail to J.C. Hunter, who was in charge of the investigation, saying Marie Corbin was murdered and he wanted justice for the family. He did nothing, nothing with that letter. He and the daughter of this woman begged for a rape kit because she had bruises up and down her legs and blood. Hunter wouldn't order a $5 rape kit. This was all covered up, and I sent you a lot of information on this. Now, if you could look at these pictures and tell me that any reasonable person would believe that Marie Corbin had a heart attack in her bed, think again. Because when I saw these pictures, they shocked my conscience. I couldn't sleep for weeks after this. And we settled this elder abuse case, but I want an investigation here because I sincerely believe, and there's a lot of other people who agree with me, that this was covered up for a reason. It was to protect Eve Murphy at that nursing home because Cam Sanchez put his mother-in-law in there so they could dope her up with a bunch of drugs. And when her, when the family, other Gonzalez family members came to see her, the man was attacked by Cam Sanchez. He was, this elderly man was attacked and hit by Sanchez. And the final thing, J.C. Hunter was involved in that too. And J.C. Hunter was also involved in the Wayne Scholes affair.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy, your time's up. I did get your email and forwarded it.
You did get my email, so I just wanted you to see these, so you would have some interest. Thank you.
Okay. That does conclude public comment. We've moved on to the consent calendar. I know items number five and eight want to be pulled. If you could read what you need to read, Susan, thank you.
Item four, records destruction for Finance Department, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Finance Department and the Administration, Accounting, Risk Management, and Treasury Divisions. Item five, resolution of support for Measure S, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara in support of Measure S 2010, imposing a county of Santa Barbara 1/2% sales and use tax for local crime and gang reduction, fire protection, and jail construction and operation. And item 17, contract for design for the Helena Avenue parking lot project, including recommendation B that the redevelopment agency board, I'm sorry, recommendation A that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and adopting the findings required by Health and Safety Code Section 33445 for redevelopment agency funding of capital improvements for a new surface public parking lot at 217 Helena Avenue, which includes authorization to execute a design contract with Penfield and Smith Engineering Incorporated.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. I know we wanted, Mr. Hotchkiss wanted number five pulled, and we have a public comment for number eight. Any other numbers?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Number 14, please.
Number 14.
I just want to speak about it. Don't need to vote separately.
Okay, just so, all right, why don't we go to number five first? Yeah?
Madam Mayor, I also wanted to at least put in a comment on 12 before we actually do the resolution.
If you could read number five?
Please.
Item five, resolution of support for Measure S.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to want to reiterate that they, all the goals of this are commendable, I just think we're going to the altar with the wrong mate here because I think the, I'm afraid the state is going to leave us holding the bag, and therefore, it'd be a mistake to get into this in the first place. It's already taken more than $6 million of our RDA funds, and this depends on the state agreeing to reduce their statewide sales tax and to also supply us with $50-plus million in an effort to complete this project, and I'm afraid it won't be forthcoming. So I just state that and say that's my reason for objecting to this. Thank you.
Would you like to vote on this separately?
Please.
Okay, so if we could have a motion for item five?
So moved.
Second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
It's a 5-2, okay. Item number eight. And if you could just read the items, Susan.
Increase in contract amount for construction of American Recovery and Reinvestment Act access ramp and sidewalk maintenance.
Okay, Nikolai Lambert had wanted to speak on this, and I'll put two minutes up here on the podium. Come on up.
As I am led to believe, this money comes from the American Recovery Act, which is a stimulus package that was sent out by the president. Other cities have said, "We don't want this tainted money because we don't agree with the debt this money has caused." And I urge the city of Santa Barbara to do the same, to say no to all these generations of taxes, and we can't afford this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 12, if you could read that item.
1235, teen center lease with Police Activities League.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Well, I had this question last week for staff, and I guess I got some response, but I'm not sure that it was a very specific response. They, really, what I am hoping to see in the lease agreement, as I guess it pertains to bullet point, let's see, bullet point four on page two of the staff report, is there has been problems in the past, at least I'm told, that sometimes we have not had folks with the expertise to use the recording and studio equipment, the music equipment in there that we as the city paid, you know, a decent amount of money for. So one of the things I was asking for that would be in the lease would be the requirement that this be, have adequate support for that part of the youth center to actually be used. And wanted to see if staff had a response for that, if it came in the last, if there was a secondary response in the last 24 hours, I didn't see it.
Okay, Ms. Hannah?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Williams, we have been working with Police Activities League over the last three months to develop the lease. And right now, we are advertising for two days a week for the recording studio to be open, and then at additional times through signup for drop-in use. So at this time, they have secured a staff person to provide recording studio services, and, you know, we are hopeful that that will bring some new life into the recording studio, and we'll be able to expand those services.
But is it, is it a provision of the lease that they would have to do that at least two days a week?
It's not a provision of the lease, but we do have the Teen Advisory Committee in place, and it will be something that we will be talking about on an ongoing basis. They will be staffing the facility and adding programming as it becomes available through other nonprofits and adding to the programming of interest to teens.
So would the Teen Advisory Committee be able to make them have it, stay, keep it open two days a week? I guess I'm not really understanding how you're addressing. My basic question is, how are we going to make sure that this equipment continues to be used when we no longer are making the administrative decisions for the day-to-day operations of the teen center?
Well, we will be working closely with the Police Activities League to make these decisions and to make sure that their programming continues in that way. It is not a specific part of the lease, per se, outlining the programming because we know that that's going to change over time. So we haven't specifically said you're going to be conducting these particular programs on a week-to-week basis, but we have allowed for input from staff, and we have a very good relationship with the Police Activities League, and this is of interest of theirs to expand in this way.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, Councilmember Williams, if I could add to that, I just met this morning with the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission, and we were talking about priorities for the commission in the coming year. And one of the priorities that she talked about is overviewing the transition of the teen center with the Police Activities League. And so I know that it has that level of focus from the commission as well, and I know that they'll be following up with the Youth Council, who will be in tune with the Youth Committee that is overseeing the operation of the teen center. And I do feel confident that any issues related to use will be addressed, and they'll be addressed very quickly by all of us. The transition is very important to all of us, that it work, and that the facility is used as it is intended, as it was designed and intended to be used.
So what would be the problem about putting it in the lease that we expect that this studio be open and usable two days a week?
I'm not sure that it's needed. At this point, we'd like to go forward with the lease just due to the timing of everything, but I feel confident that that expectation will be met.
I guess I feel like I have asked the question maybe five times, how are we, what is our leverage if it's not in the lease? How are we going to make sure that that can continue? Consultation, but you're not telling me, how are we going to be able to ensure this? And it's not, this is not something I made up. This is something the youth have asked me about, and I would like to know, if we don't need it in the lease, how are we going to make sure that that continues to happen?
Well, I guess my response is a little more general in that our discussions and our plans with the Police Activities League is that they will continue to operate the teen center as we have. And we ourselves have struggled with having appropriately skilled staff to operate the recording studio. So I, it wouldn't surprise me from time to time if the Police Activities League had some of the same challenges that we did. But I fully expect that their, that their intent is to operate and utilize the facility to the best of their abilities. If the city was significantly unhappy with how the lease was being implemented and the programming, we have the capacity to end the lease. If it comes to that, I'm certainly hoping that that's not the case.
I mean, to me, that sounds like a pretty heavy hammer to use over one thing that, I mean, we have pretty specific references in the lease, and I'm wondering why one more specific provision in the lease would be a problem. I mean, you know, the, is there, I guess this is a question for Mr. Wiley, is there any reason why we couldn't write that into the lease?
Wiley?
And approve that as one of the provisions?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, no, not that I'm aware of.
Well, that would be my suggestion to the council, that, you know, there have been, there have been, on the part of the youth that participate, both former and current youth council members, there is a great level of unease with transferring a public asset to the nonprofit. I have a lot of confidence in PAL, but if it, to me, if it puts stakeholders at ease that these equipment will actually get used by putting it in the lease, I'd be happy to do that.
So what specifically are you asking of us?
I am asking that we approve this today, but with the amendment that the, that one of the provisions of the lease is the expectation that PAL will operate the recording studio two days a week.
Staff, do you have any comments on adding that to the lease at this point?
Madam Mayor, our one concern is that this lease has already been approved by the PAL Board of Directors, and any changes to the lease would have to go back to them. And that does mean that the transition of the facility could potentially be delayed until we can bring the lease back and have that approval, just the whole coordination of that. So it is possible, it's just that everything is lined up for a September 1st transition.
Okay, we have some lights on, so why don't we, Mr., sorry, Mr. Francisco and Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If Mr. Williams feels that this is an issue of such importance as to delay approval of this lease, then I guess it needs to be agendized and brought before the council, so all the relevant parties can be here and present the information they need to present. Personally, I think we could go forward with the lease as it's negotiated, but if Mr. Williams says, you know, this is absolutely a stopping point and wants to bring this back as an agenda item to council, fine, no problem.
Okay, Mr. House?
Not to micromanage and certainly not to delay. I know we've heard from the concerns expressed over and again by young people who, the Youth Council and others, who are really concerned about the transition. And I mean, they're worried, this is a place they really have a sense of identity with and ownership. Ms. Rapp, is there anything that your office could do that would, short of changing the lease, that would actually convey the concerns we've been hearing in a way that would really, you know, send the message to PAL how important these things are? You know, for them to, if there were a loss, for instance, of their ability to use that recording studio, that's quite a bit's been invested in that, and some of the other facilities as well that are there. If they, I think, I think it would really be meaningful if your office could, could send a letter separate or associate some sort of a communication about the importance and your support for, you know, continued use, robust use of this facility in a way that these young people really intended when they devised the idea in the first place. I mean, is there something that you could do that would help us communicate that rather than just change the lease?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, and councilmembers, certainly, we could do that. And I will also share that priority with the Park and Recreation Commission, who will be overseeing this transition and the operation of the programs at the teen center. So we could do that, and we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. We just really need to get the word across and make sure that I know that we're all, you know, really, at least of this mind, that we want to use it as fully as possible, maintain those services.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Self?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm afraid I don't remember the woman who came up and spoke about the filmmaking for at youth, at with...
Regina Ruiz from Youth Center Media.
Yes. Now, would this be something maybe in collaboration, that she used the studio for her purposes and volunteered some of the time for, if she's familiar with filmmaking, she is probably, would be one person who would be able to assist in this capacity too, for forgiveness of rent. My concern about putting it hard and set in concrete, as Mrs. Rapp has expressed, that they themselves have had problems getting staff that was knowledgeable and able to keep this part of the studio up and running. And one of the things, excuse me, I received many of these letters, and I was a little bit disappointed because, as it's been expressed, the youth feel ownership. They certainly do. But I never, at one point, and I responded back to them about this, I never saw a sense of gratitude, and I think that is sorely missing in society. It is their equipment at the generosity of this community. And I would just hope they could appreciate that PAL is a group who is dedicated to working with youth, and that their concerns about having the police in there, I'm hoping, will help them recognize that the police are here to facilitate... that the police are here to facilitate, to work with them, to help them have the best life they can. And so, I don't feel I could support it if it had this concrete what had to happen, but I would certainly support looking into more of a collaborative effort that is a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thinking sort of à la Planning Commission, the, the notion of coming back in a, in a year or whatever with some feedback on, on its use as, as part of the cycle, that then might at least, I appreciate that we'd have this multi-year lease in place, and it would not answer all of the concerns of a leaseholder, but at least the, the feedback loop would be there to, to tell us how we're doing, and perhaps from there, more actions could be taken to, to stimulate better use of the facility if it's falling short. I hear it's a struggle area. I, I for one, support the flexibility, just knowing that times are changing, where, obviously they're not easy times, but I also appreciate that we could have a feedback loop that would tell us how we're doing and go to, go to funders, et cetera, to look for that additional support if we're falling short. So, that would be an approach that I would ask Mr. Williams to consider, because I, I think we want to move forward with this sooner than later.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss, and then Mr. Williams.
Just a quick question, maybe this is not even I should ask this, but Mr. Williams, I just want to ask, any of the things you've heard here, would that allow us to go forward today, including perhaps a phone call from you to head of PAL expressing your concern, which I think would make a great impression?
Well, I, you know, I think the concern honestly is that we are relying off of, well, I guess I have one other question first before I can really answer your question, which is that the, the staff report says that the lease requires them, PAL, to continue to provide and maintain facility equipment, including the recording equipment. How is that not a requirement for them to continue to have staff that can allow that to be provided? If it's set, and this is kind of the difficulty of, of handling this item, your lease isn't in the staff report, so it's only an interpretation of what the lease is that's written here. And so, my question is, how is that not a requirement, that they don't continue to have staffing that can use the recording equipment? Because staff report says that it is a requirement to continue to provide the, the recording, the recording equipment.
Ms. Rapp?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Williams, the lease is written with very specific protections that should PAL have a different situation and walk away, whether it's one year, two years, three years, that the city's equipment in its current condition will be replaced in that, I mean, and maintained at that condition. So we wanted to protect the investment from the Women's Fund of Santa Barbara in the teen center and the city's funds that are invested in the teen center in equipment. The teen center has a lot of electronic equipment, and so, very specifically, we wrote that lease to have an inventory of that equipment with make, model, and it has to be replaced in like value. So, our expectation is they'll be maintaining that equipment, and if needed, they'll replace it prior to returning the facility over to city staff. And I, I just have to say, I fully expect that PAL is going to be operating the recording studio. The equipment is there, the space is there, we've heard nothing to tell us any different. And for us, the city, as we ran the facility, the most successful program we had there was through a third-party nonprofit program that operated just a music program in the recording studio. And I know that PAL is going to be looking for other partners to come in and provide services, just as we did. So, I, I, my expectation is that it will be used, my, and available to youth as it has been. I've, I've got no reason to think otherwise.
Is it, I, I still am not getting the answer to the question, is it a requirement to provide the recording equipment in the lease, as the staff report indicates?
It's included in the inventory of equipment.
How would they be able to provide it without having staff to be able to operate it?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Williams, often youth know how to use the equipment on their own. So, truthfully, the, the staff that support the, the recording studio give an introduction to youth and assist youth in using it, but frequently, youth can go in there and use it on their own, like they do the other pieces of equipment that are in the facility.
So one way or another, there will be hours?
There will be drop-in. There is already set up, two days a week for two hours a day, that you can have instruction and insistence, assistance in learning how to use the equipment, and then you can sign up for additional drop-in hours throughout the week and the times.
Okay. That's, I think that's good enough.
Okay.
And just one more thing, they talked about the feedback loop. There is a requirement for PAL to come back to the Commission and to give reports twice annually about what's going on, the activities, the number of participants, and give us feedback about the pluses and minuses, so that we can make improvement throughout the year. And that's to the Commission and the Youth Council.
Okay. I think we, I think we had enough conversation, I mean, I think it's important that we have the lease moved forward, especially since our next meeting's not till September 14th. Do you need to vote on this separately, Mr. Williams?
No.
No? Okay. And thank you in the back, Mr. Captain Zeiler for being here. Do you want to mention anything, or you're, you were just listening to, you heard loud and clear that we love the recording studio and want it to be utilized, I think. So, I think that's really the message, that we want to make sure that, that teens who use the teen center has access to the recording studio there.
If he has a moment just to say, I mean, for people to hear that would be really good. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I really think it's good for people to hear from PAL, especially the young people who have these concerns.
Thanks. And just state your name for the record, I appreciate it.
Is there a switch on?
Yeah, I, you're on.
Madam Mayor and Council, we, we are going to do, continue the recording studio. We've actually made contact with a couple of people here in town, notes to notes, that does some on-campus things right now and does some stuff at the Boys Club. We've talked with them on Sunday. We're going to see if we can kind of expand the program a little bit, have more hours. I think right now, they're only down for maybe two days. There's no reason, at this point, with the programs in there, why it can't be more, three or four days. So, we, we, everything that's there right now, we will continue, try to enhance, get more programs in there, and get more kids in the, in the facility.
Great, great.
That's music to our ears for a recording studio. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, move the consent calendar.
We still have one other item that needed to be pulled before moving the rest of the consent calendar, which is item number 14.
Revisions to affordable housing in lieu fee.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to highlight this bit of good news. As you know, the Inclusionary Housing Program is a program whereby the city extracts money from some new home buyers and gives it to others whom it feels deserving. And because, there's a complicated formula that involves housing and urban developments, estimate of the current average, the, the median household income in the county, the federal government's determination of what a low-income person should be able to pay for a house in Santa Barbara, which this year is $89,500. The median sales price in the city, estimated production cost of housing, et cetera. In any case, because the median housing price has declined, the so-called in lieu fee that, the subsidy fee that the city pays for each affordable housing unit is declining from $360,000 to $310,000, and I, I do consider that to be good news, and of course, I will support it, and I look forward to the day when it will be eliminated entirely.
With that, would you like to make a motion for the rest of the consent?
I would like to move the rest of the consent calendar.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That concludes the consent calendar. Thank you. Item number 20.
West Beach Planning Study.
Mr. Bradley?
Madam Chair, I think if we can just take a minute to get the planning consultants here at the table with me, then we'll have the full contingent be ready to proceed forward. Good afternoon. My name's John Bradley, I'm the Waterfront Director for the city, and before I turn this over to Pat Salee, I'd like to just give you a little brief introduction and background as to what the West Beach Planning Study is and what our goals were. As part of the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project, which is a different animal than what we're going to talk about here today, there was significant interest that was expressed about West Beach by a various amount of users, neighbors, tenants, business owners, et cetera. So this process actually began as kind of an offshoot of that capital improvement project, and was initiated in the spring of 2009. As you all know, the Pedestrian Improvement Project has been completed and is a signic, a signic, a signic, it's a great enhancement at the waterfront department. And to that end, the redevelopment agency paid for that capital improvement and also dedicated $15,000 to undertake this study. And we hired Pat Salee and Janice Thompson to undertake and complete it for us. It's a focused study, it's really on West Beach, the sandy beach area. Primary goal, primary goal was to really identify the existing users and uses that take place there. We have a number of activities, both park and recreation-related, waterfront-related, but there may be future enhancements or improvements to the area that certainly will follow the pedestrian improvement project that we just recently completed, along with supporting the ocean-related recreational users or visitor-serving activities. All of this is in, in an effort, obviously, to help enhance our waterfront area, but also, as you know, one of the goals was to get people clearly into the harbor area as part of the pedestrian improvement. So with that, Janice and, and Pat have done a great job, not only to identify all of the issues and stakeholders, but any potential obstacles that there will be whenever you involve a building or enhancing or putting structures on public sandy beaches. After Pat's done, I'd like to take just a moment to summarize kind of staff and park and recreation, waterfront and park recreations position on this study.
Mr. Salee, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. John just went through the purpose of this study. Again, it's very focused on West Beach, trying to breathe some life into the area, bring more people into the harbor area, and we did engage a lot of people in this process, and hopefully will achieve those goals. The study itself includes the typical history background. As I think you know, West Beach did not exist until the late 20s, when first the Breakwater was built by Fleishman, and then a couple of years later, it was connected to shore, and voila, we have West Beach. The study reiterates the, the various things we found through a needs assessment process, and we produced a draft in November last year, had meetings with the Planning Commission, Harbor Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and got a lot of comments, and as a result of that, we have this phased implementation plan. Mentioned briefly that the beach was created about 80 years ago, and the width has greatly varied. One of the things in the Harbor Master Plan that both Janice and I worked on was the idea of creating a small boat quiet area. And if you've been down there on a Sunday in particular, there's a lot of young kids, they're part of the Seashell Organization, and as the beach got wider, those kids who were not very adept, at least initially at maneuvering their sailboats, were pretty much in the navigation channel, which really wasn't a very good idea. And so, one of the things in the Harbor Master Plan, it has since been implemented, is about a quarter of a million cubic yards of sand were removed in kind of a crescent shape, and of course, that sand helps down-coast beaches, so it was definitely a win-win. There were two redevelopment agency funding requests, one from the Schumash Maritime Association, one from the Santa Barbara Outriggers, and those were not funded in 2007, but the ideas behind those have been incorporated and discussed quite a bit in this process, and I'll talk about that in a moment. We are pretty much 100% in the coastal zone. If you look, if I can find the mouse, this is original permit jurisdiction, and you have to imagine West Beach, of course, being much wider here, but Coastal Commission, important player here, there are a lot of policies talking about access, protecting access, protecting recreation users, just there, the whole idea that a wide sandy beach in an urban area is a very special thing, and there are sensitive habitats, et cetera. So we had to take all these into account. The local coastal plan builds on those policies and reiterates them. The preference for lower-cost visitor-serving experiences, that's something that's very important in the Coastal Act, protecting views, and avoiding structures that might in the future require, you know, seawalls or something of that nature. The Harbor Master Plan was approved in 1996, and it takes those policies from the Coastal Act, the LCP, and takes them to a more specific level. Already mentioned the small boat quiet area, the idea of some landscaping between the seawall and the beachway was discussed, and things like volleyball courts, sort of a recognition that it would be nice to have more activity and more amenities in that area to bring more people down to the waterfront in general, and West Beach in particular. In the course of all this, we went through a lot of city ordinances, and there are two that are particularly germane. The Parks and Recreation Ordinance says you can't have any structures on the sandy beach except restrooms and lifeguard towers. And if some of the structures that we'll be presenting today were ever to be approved or considered, obviously that provision would need to be amended. And the definition of beach in the Parks and Rec Zone is, you know, areas that provide access to the ocean and sand for passive and active recreation. It talks about minor structures, you know, I'm sure there'd be some debate as to what's a minor structure. Those are all issues off in the future, but it was our job to just shed some light on them. We met twice with Coastal Commission staff, which was quite an accomplishment in and of itself. And they were very emphatic that this is very special to have this wide beach, and it, and it's very interesting, people see that differently, some people see it as too wide, they, they loved that. They, they were not averse to the idea of structures on the beach, but they had quite a few caveats, and having the structures open to the public rather than fenced off was important, and providing, if it is a structure, would have a recreational component and an educational interpretive component. Those things were very important. We researched to see what sort of precedent there is. We found two projects that are still more or less on hold before the Coastal Commission, they both involved lifeguard towers and public restrooms, so different sort of thing than we're talking about here. Quite a few studies are typically required when you get anywhere near the beach, and any structure or any proposal would have to be run through those filters. I think everybody knows the beach today. Up here, we have what we affectionately call the Seashell Condos, I always want to put quote marks around that. Arlington West here in the foreground with an aircraft carrier, and this is from Sterns Wharf looking west, I guess it would be showing one of the Outrigger operations. Up here, we have a tamal or canoe used by the Schumash Maritime Association and others, and this is a little hard to see, but this was the previous dredge storage yard. Right now, that's not there because the lease is being renegotiated, and I'm sure John could elaborate on that, but the intention is that's, that yard or something similar would be placed in the West Beach area in the very near future. Just a few slides of the West Beach pedestrian improvements, the story circle on the top left, pedestrian crosswalks. And then... And then this is a black-crowned night heron. You may not realize it, but those myoperum trees right along the walkway near the condos actually probably at any given time have about eight or 10 in there, but they're pretty well camouflaged. But there are a lot of resources. Parking's important, public services, visitor-serving facilities. So we're trying to balance all of these in the course of this study. We did a needs assessment. This was a pretty intense process. We talked to about 50 people, including city staff. And everyone likes West Beach. There, of course, are different opinions as to what could be done there. Pretty common theme was, we recognize the need for the dredge storage yard, but there's got to be a way to make it look better or conceal it some, move boats and such around it. And then we got some feedback about Plaza del Mar and the art show, and people are the people who are down in the West Beach area pretty regularly are interested, for the most part, not everyone, in just having more activities. Could the art show shift to the west? I mean, we've talked about that. So there were a lot of ideas out there, and we tried to capture those in the study, not that there anybody's advocating them, just for posterity's sake and future discussion. So the draft study had two alternatives, and they're roughly the same as Phase One and Phase Two. And Alternative A was called sort of the softer approach, just kind of standardizing the outrigger storage facilities and moving small sailboats and such around the dredge storage yard so it's not as visible, and improving the signage. And these things would be pretty easy to do, would not be a very difficult permitting path, most likely. The second alternative, which is pretty much the same as Phase Two, had two included two structures, an outrigger halle, which is just, you might think of it as a nicer-looking carport with no walls at all, and a Schumash house or op, which is like a storage facility for tamales or canoes. And it includes some native landscaping along the Cabrillo seawall, between the wall and the beachway. And the biggest factor is that there is no funding, be it public or private funding at this point, and the approval process is expected to be somewhat arduous. So the comments we received from the three commissions, they were split in thirds, not by commission but by as individuals. Some liked just, let's just do the soft, easy stuff, Alternative A or Phase One things. Some liked Phase Two or Alternative B, and some liked both. And here, Alternative A, more easily achieved and a softer approach, first phase, this is where we got the phasing idea. How about doing Alternative A or Phase One and see what sort of difference it makes? And, you know, take things slowly before Alternative B is considered. We heard some other things from the three commissions, you know, the idea of that maybe the waiting pool could be a splash park, maybe Plaza del Mar could be used more. Some of those ideas we'd heard during the needs assessment came up when we met with the three commissions as well. So this is the plan, and this is a little difficult to read. I lost it. This is the area where most of the outriggers are stored, and we're looking at more standardized racks and maybe a little more symmetry to it all. The dredge storage yard is roughly in this location, but ringing it with sailboats and things, so it's not as readily visible. And also upgrading over here, just smoothing this area out, and then some additional signage to pull people here and ideally over to the harbor commercial area as well. Phase Two, the main difference is right here, the idea of one or two structures, the outrigger halle or sort of storage slash meeting room house, and the tamal house or op. And then up here along, the idea was native dune plantings, and that is something that I'm sure Nancy Rapp from Parks and Rec will clarify if there are any questions. But they raise that landscaping raise maintenance issues that, given our budgetary times, are a concern. So the one phase would build on this, the second phase would build on the first phase. Phase One, and these are the condos, seashell condos that have recently been painted. They are regularly maintained, but it's pretty harsh environment, so that's an ongoing job. It's the Phase One improvements, consistent with all policies, require coordination with the various groups, but a lot of that has been going on for many years, and especially as we've done this study. Would not cost a lot to implement. However, on the downside, these improvements would only go partway to realizing the goal goals of the study that John outlined. Phase Two, the main difference being one or two structures and the landscaping. This is a graphic that the Santa Barbara Outrigger Club prepared, and we included in the report. And Eric Friedman and some other folks from that club are here to speak today. This is the site plan showing, I think it's six large outriggers with some storage on each end, but it would be open. If you look carefully, you can even see the breakwater through there. The tamal house, this being a tamal on the left, the idea is this is an inverted tamal with the sides open, so you can see through there and could walk under there. I think it had about a 12-foot height, if I remember correctly. The light blue on the top here would be a skylight to let natural light in. So this is like a side view in this dimension, and Ray Ward's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong. I remember this being 12 feet. And then this is like its structural element, and these are like pads. Technically, it would be a temporary structure, not set with concrete and such. The issues, on the positive side, certainly the halle and op would draw more people to the area, as intended in this study. The approval process would be quite challenging, not impossible, but could be difficult. And there is the fundamental issue of you've got a quasi-private use on public land, although open to the public 24/7. The funding is unknown at this time, and then there is a concern of the impact on city budget, various city departments' budgets, just the idea of, well, what happens if the nonprofit that would be operating one of these structures were not able to do that anymore? Would the default be that one of the city departments have to pick up that obligation? Additional recommendations we got, both in the needs assessment and from the various the three commissions, is just trying to have more programming elements, like expanding maybe the arts and crafts show or something like that. Develop a first-something program for West Beach, kind of like the first Thursday idea that is done, the first Thursday of every month downtown. See about using Plaza del Mar more for activities, and then studying the waiting pool. And again, we just captured these in the report for future consideration. So today, we're, of course, be happy to answer any questions, like to hear from the public, and then we're looking for input from the city council on Phase One and Phase Two. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with questions first. We do have some public comment. Any questions from Ms. Self? Oh, sorry, I didn't, there you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, you said it was going to be just sitting on the sand. Would there be engineering studies to say the kind of wind it would take to shift this thing? I think it's attractive, but, you know.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, I worked in planning for lots of years, and there's lots and lots of studies that are always required before anything is done. And there's wave run-up studies. It would be studied quite a bit.
Thank you.
I have one question dealing with this fundamental issue of quasi-private use on public land. So the harbor is public land, it's city land, and we have private uses leased to the waterfront department, right? And so I guess the question is, is it because it's, what's the difference? Because it's on sand as opposed to the harbor? Is that basically the fundamental difference here legally when it comes to the Coastal Commission? Mr. Bridley?
Madam Mayor, the answer is yes. If, and I think Pat touched on it, but clearly, the Coastal Commission does not allow you to cover any aspect of a sandy beach unless there's a public benefit use, public access point, whatever it might be. Because you would be leasing this area to an organization that would basically have some exclusive use, but yet still open to the public, makes it, as Pat put it, quasi-public.
Okay.
So that would be the issue and the concern, and quite frankly, both Park and Rec and the waterfront department have concerns about that, not only relative to the proposal, but as a precedent-setting matter for other organizations that could see the benefit of a structure on a beach or in a beachfront area for their use. None of that has been resolved, worked out, clearly defined, because, again, we're talking general concepts here today with the planning study.
Okay. And I'm not making this suggestion, but for example, if any of these items were put on the parking lot, you know, the house or whatever, that would be different because it's not on the sand. I mean, so just that's pretty much the basic difference between.
Yeah, if you put it on, we have the leasing ability or control through the state titlance grant to manage our hardscape properties much differently than we do the beaches.
Okay. All right, just to be clear. Mr. White, have a question?
Madam Mayor, one of the comments in the stakeholder interviews had to do with the multimodal path, and so a piece of that obviously goes through this study area, and yet I don't recall that anything was in the Phase One or any of that. And I just, since there was a silence on that, I would appreciate hearing the words that might have come if the multimodal path were, topic were raised.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, or excuse me, Councilmember White, we, in this area here, where the open-sided halle and/or tamal house would possibly be located, we looked at lots of different configurations, including moving the multimodal path. And as I recall, there was an element of that involved in the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project, and we decided that if something wasn't really broke, let's not fix it. And if it seemed to work and it was being upgraded, let's just leave that alone and work around it. I mean, so, but people didn't talk about the users of the multimodal path. I mean, it is what it is, and it's one of the more popular facilities down there. So we pretty much just left it alone.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have some public comment. Two minutes up on the podium here. We have Ray Ward, who will start, followed by Eric Friedman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. My name is Ray Ward. I am Chair of the Schumash Maritime Association, and I'm a captain of the tamal Elliotwun. And just for starters, I have some informational packets for members that have not received Representatives from the Schumash community and from the Santa Barbara Outrigger Canoe Club are working together to bring a unique maritime traditions of Santa Barbara, siopdun, to the public view with an outrigger canoe halle and a tamal op at West Beach to house our canoes. The Schumash Maritime Association, CMA, is a California 501(c)(3) nonprofit formed by a group of Schumash people in 1996 with the purpose of revitalizing their indigenous maritime heritage. They built the Elliotwun, I should say, we built the Elliotwun. Our tamal, a traditional som-plank canoe that has crossed the Channel, Santa Barbara Channel, six times, from Channel Islands Harbor to Scorpion Harbor. The crossing is an annual event that involves hundreds of native people who gather in the ancient village of Swahool on Limu, Santa Cruz Island, to receive the tamal and her paddlers. We work closely with the National Park Service, NOAA, Channel Islands National Marine Sanctuary, and local fishermen during this event and throughout the year. In order to prepare for the crossing, CMA supports regular paddle practices and community gatherings at West Beach. Currently, we house our tamal at the Watershed Resource Center and have a longstanding, good relationship with County Parks and Art from Scrap. We have collaborated with County Parks, Janet Woof, and Santa Barbara Beautiful to establish and maintain a native plant garden with Art from Scrap and with Art from Scrap on many public events to bring out our tamal and tell stories, provide summer cultural youth camps. There is not room in the new tamal house.
You do need to start winding up, please. We're beyond two minutes, so.
There is not room for the new tamales that we have built and are being built at the Watershed Resource Center. Our tamales are beautiful seaworthy vessels and are valuable teachers. We propose building a tamal op at West Beach that will provide public access and both passive and interactive education regarding Santa Barbara's unique and ancient maritime heritage. The tamal op will house three tamales and provide Schumash community beach access to launch our tamales and develop a comprehensive safety program for our families.
Okay, could you wind up, please?
Yeah. The tamal op will provide endless opportunities for community outreach and education and international goodwill. The canoe culture is found throughout the world and is being revived.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Friedman will be followed by Skip Abid.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider, fellow council members. My name is Eric Friedman, and I'm representing Santa Barbara Outrigger. Santa Barbara Outrigger is a 501(c)(3) established in 1982, and we're dedicated to the promotion of amateur athletics, specifically the competitive sport of outrigger canoe racing and the historical and cultural traditions associated with this sport. I think Ray summed up a lot of the cultural and aspects of this. So we're here today, Santa Barbara Outrigger, is to ask you to conceptually support Phase Two or Alternative B. And this is a process that we've been embarked on for about five years now. It was about five years ago I came before the council and mentioned these as part of the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project, and here we are today after many meetings all over town in Klima Pada, Rusty's Pizza, was a lot of great conversations. And we really think the halle and the tamal house would create a vision that's, that supports the vision of getting people from the wharf, enticing them to come across West Beach. It would be a focal point, and then those two facilities could, with signage and other amenities, direct people over into the harbor area. They would be visually attractive for people. Right now, people see the canoes from the wharf and walk over on occasion. Santa Barbara Outrigger is down there about six days, five or six days a week during the season, which runs from March until September, and these would allow the outrigger team to be there year-round. For maintenance reasons on the canoes, we store them off property in the winter, but this would allow us to be down there all year. And the overall concept of what we're proposing is, with the new pedestrian improvement project and the Schumash Mosaic that was just established a few months back, is locals and tourists alike could come and see the story circle. It tells the history of the tamal and watercraft in Santa Barbara. And then lo and behold, you look over to your right a couple hundred yards down, and you see actual tamales, a tamal house, and you see other forms of maritime watercraft that are being used today by locals and others. With Santa Barbara Outrigger, we've raced, using Santa Barbara name all over literally the world. We go to Hawaii every year. We've had races far away in Australia, New Zealand, and we're proud to wear the Santa Barbara name and get many compliments on our design. And we just feel this goes a lot with what we see in Hawaii as a community gathering place, and it would welcome families and others to come down there. So we really hope that today you support the Phase Two, and that would just allow us to continue to work through the normal city planning, city planning process, to iron out all of these obstacles that lay before us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think Mr. House has a question for you.
Mr. Friedman, just a quick question for you. So the idea would be that there'd be the shelters for both the historic Schumash craft to be built, and people be interacting, and to be able to see the outriggers and how they're they're used and being-- How does that work? There's different groups, aren't there, of outrigger clubs that have their outriggers on the beach? I know there's one group over by the wharf, and then there's the group that you're associated with that's over in this other area. How do you intend to work that out?
Well, the other groups have been part of the planning process. I know there's the Canaya, which is near Stern's Wharf, has been to many of the meetings, and the other outrigger groups are there, and none of them have proposed to have this type of facility. I don't think they, I can't speak for them, but our club is about 65 people with a couple dozen that are inactive, so we're a large club, and we've been around for about 30 years, like since 1982. So we have that history, and we have a larger club base than the, some of the other clubs, with the exception of the one by the wharf, which is also, but again, they haven't proposed this. And so we're taking this on, and we've been in collaboration, working with the Chumash and the city planning process, and it's something that we felt we wanted to take as a club. And I think the other clubs haven't decided to do that. I can't speak for why they haven't, but ultimately, we think working with the Chumash and tying it into one area there, and specifically that northwest corner by the seashells, keeping it in that area, which, just the other day, when I was there, we were there, and it was a typical summer day, about 80 degrees, and in that area, there wasn't one person that was in the area we're talking about. Everyone's either down by the water, so that, that one area is what we're focusing on. And so that's how we would, and we've talked to the other groups, and they seem to be supportive, or at least have not objected at this point to us.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then I also have, I had provided yesterday copies of the updated design, and I have three additional copies for the public record--
Thank you very much.
--I'd like to submit.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Mr. Abid, followed by Kellum DeForest, and the final speaker will be Betsy Kramer.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. My name's Skip Abid. I'm president of the Harbor Merchants Association, and I just wanted to say this is a great project. I also wanted to bring some light on the West Beach Improvement Pedestrian Project that is, from what I understand, almost completed. We've got the signs to get in, and we're done with that project, and it's, it's working. I don't know if you've driven down along Cabrillo Boulevard, but I mean, people are walking out on these bullbouts, cars are stopping, and people are crossing the street. If you look over at West Beach, and over the years, I've talked to a number of people that have been in the harbor for many years, and they say they've never seen so many people on West Beach. So it's, it's a great, it was a great project. It went through a lot of hoops and everything, and a lot of time from everybody, but it worked, and it's working, so I really appreciate that. That was the first phase of the West Beach Improvement Project for the Harbor Merchants and the waterfront, and we, we have now gotten everybody to the beach or over to the Los Banios Pool, which is great, but from the Harbor Merchants' perspective, we want to get them to the head of our harbor, Harbor Way, and so on. So what I would like to propose is looking at some funds to continuing our phases of the West Beach Improvement Project. Get them over to where the shops and restaurants are, so they can be spending money in those areas, because frankly, we're both in business together. We're on percentage rents, and when we do well, you guys do well, and it's a good thing for the whole city. So we're looking at a couple of projects, doing an interactive fountain that you've seen in some cities, also breakwater lights that go out to the breakwater. If you look at some of the famous harbors throughout the world, and ours are one of them, you know, Saint-Tropez, Monaco, and you look at the daytime, they have beautiful flags going down their breakwater. At night, they have some ambiance lighting going down in the evenings, and we would like to see that done. The waterfront department right now has some major things. They're working on a 10-year project with Marina One Expansion from the last Harbor Commission meeting. In the far future, the building that homes Brophy Brothers, the sushi place, and a t-shirt shop will have to be eventually rebuilt. So they have some major things on their plate, so, not to be cheesy, but to quote a movie, "Help me help you." Help me help you, because the more we make, the more everybody makes. So I would encourage a jumpstart and some funds to help. The fountain project is around a $300,000 project. The lights are about $400,000, so we're looking at around $700,000 to complete those two projects, and it would be very much appreciated to be able to get that done sooner or later. The breakwater is done. It was about a six-year project, and it's complete, and now would be a great time to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr.--
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Abid. Kellum DeForest, and then Commissioner Kramer.
Good afternoon, and Kellum DeForest, and a little history is in order. Contrary to what the people say, I guess they weren't from Santa Barbara, a beach, of course, has existed there on the west side since before history. And of course, it was the beach in front of the famous Potter Hotel. And even though I don't remember the Potter Hotel, I do remember going to West Beach as a little child and swimming there, because West Beach had no waves, and the East Beach was too scary for a little child. And of course, the sand has accumulated through the years. I agree with continuing the policies to have local beaches maintained in their natural state. The outlook of an uncluttered beach is a plus for those staying at the motels on Cabrillo Boulevard and the tourists that walk down. And I, it is, I'm sorry, there does need to be a reason for the tourists to go to West Beach. I don't, but I think a number of people do, especially now that the sidewalk has been improved and made much more walkable. But I do plead with you, do not add structures or plant material to West Beach. Please keep it a beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The final speaker would be Betsy Kramer.
Good afternoon. Now, follow on what he just said, please don't add structures. And this is a really attractive project, and the proponents certainly reached out to a variety of stakeholders, but except on part of page 12 of the, of the study, there's no serious consideration given to the wildlife, nor were there consultations that I know of with the Wildlife Care Network, whose volunteers spend quite a lot of time rescuing seabirds at the harbor in the West Beach area. And two of them came and spoke to us at the Harbor Commission about that, actually. And one of the evaluations, one of the purposes, is to, quote, "possibly encourage more use of the beach area." Skip Abid pointed out what my observations of this summer, that the West Beach area has been strongly used this year. And I'm not sure exactly when this study began, but certainly this past summer, usage has been high, probably much higher than that on East Beach, and there's been boaters of various sizes, walkers, dog walkers, volleyball players, political efforts, and quite a few more uses. What's not given emphasis is the passive pleasures of just quietly sitting, sunning, reading, birdwatching on the beach, and there are few places in downtown Santa Barbara now with city residents, especially those without backyards, can just go and be. What's also not given emphasis is the wildlife. The shorebirds have no other place to go to hunt and recreate but the beaches. For the pelicans, even as the population has increased, as we saw last winter, there are very few non-human populated places. Some of us, including me, think that the native wildlife deserves serious consideration, and this is incorporated into the Coastal Act Policies, Policies Number 30240 and 44, Protect Sensitive Habitats. A beach is the essence of a sensitive habitat, and more than just that, for the snowy plover should be considered. The advisory committees were strongly divided as to the extent of the development, whether A or B, or one person on the Park and Rec Commission should be nothing at all, and, or whether there should be more buildings, even such possibly attractive ones as a tomol house. And in the proposed ad hoc West Beach Advisory Committee, notable is no representation of those concerned with the wildlife. There should be. Sometimes having no funds is a blessing. I hope the council will consider and put aside this, this study. And paraphrasing a more literate person, it's not that I love this plan less, but that I love more the openness and unspoiled nature of the beach. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that closes public comment. It's back to the council. Mr. Williams.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I ask--
Sorry, you did ask for that. Go right ahead.
Sorry, I'll jump right back in, but first of all, I want to thank Pat and Janice. I think the study is an excellent tool that we can use in the future, and I think they've done a great job, and it will be an excellent resource. Second, again, I'd just reemphasize the precedent-setting nature, and I think somebody asked the question that kind of is really the crux of the matter. There are other beach users that probably could see the value of similar structures or facilities that would benefit them that aren't included in this proposal, so we're concerned about the precedent-setting, and a lot of people ask, "How did those condos get there?" Well, the beach condos were built in 1960, and that was before the Coastal Commission had jurisdiction over the beach areas directly, and I don't believe if you asked to do that today, you'd get that permit or approval, at least in the same form or fashion that we have. These facilities or proposals are not high priorities of either the Park and Recreation or the Waterfront Department. We have other things on our plate, as was spoken to. As with any new improvements, there's the maintenance costs that will be ongoing, whether they're privately owned, quasi-public, operated, maintained, whose facility they really are once they're placed on a public beach. The other critical component, and Brian Bossi can speak to this better than anybody, from my understanding, there is no redevelopment agency funding for these type of projects or programs, and clearly, I know there's none in the general fund, nor are there any identified in the waterfront department budget. And lastly, should the council agree to go forward, I think it would be incumbent, incumbent and prudent for the stakeholders who are interested in proceeding forward, should it be the Alternative B phase, be the ones that would shoulder the cost of either the permit of obtaining the necessary entitlements or permits and/or the cost of the project or the facilities. And with that, I think there are city staff here as you deliberate and have questions.
Thank you. Okay, now it's to the council, and Mr. Williams.
Well, I would agree that, that there are probably other users that might want to have similar uses at the beach, but I would just indicate that it would, those users would probably not represent a, the last vestige of a very important part of our cultural resources in our community. The, and I, and I think staff underestimates the potential at the Coastal Commission to value native cultural resources. The Coastal Commission approved an entire replica village in Southern California, and I think that the possibility of the Coastal Commission permitting a tomol houses is, at least in the realm of reason, given that, given that case. I think that we should, I think there's two different decisions. There's a, the financial, there's whether we want to move ahead on this project, and like other projects that the city undertakes, we then have to figure out year to year what pots of money we have and whether we fund Project X or Project Y, or whether we fund neither, or whether we, you know, fund Project Z. But at very least, I hope that we will support this project moving forward. I don't think it would be appropriate to allocate funds for it today without looking in the context of all the funds that we have, but like many other projects that the city undertakes, we endeavor to support a project long before the funding ever becomes available for it, and I believe that we should support this project. And if that allows, if that means that these nonprofits are responsible themselves for coming up with the funds to move them forward, then that's fine, but I believe that we, as a city council, have a duty to celebrate a part of our history, and I think we do so much as a community to celebrate our history. But if you lived here for a short time, you would think that our history began with, you know, the Spanish. And there are thousands of years of our history that, much longer than that. And this, you know, as it was mentioned by one speaker, this town of Santa Barbara, before it was called Santa Barbara, we had a Chumash village here called Shuyoktun, and I believe that we should acknowledge that on West Beach, and I believe that it would be appropriate to acknowledge that in a larger form than just the Chumash Mosaic, given that there are very few vestiges of this history in the city. And so I think this would be a proper tribute to our history to allow a Phase Two to move forward. I would also indicate, to Betsy's point, that Phase Two also includes native plant restoration, and one of the most important ways that we can protect the biological resources in that area is to restore sections of that beach. And actually, planting native dune plants really doesn't take much maintenance. We've done it at Sands Beach. It all, it only takes roping off sections for long enough for those plants to take hold. After that, it really, you know, it's not like you have to water them. So I would support wholeheartedly Phase Two.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm appreciative of the work that went into this study, and of all the work that the various boards and commissions did in considering it, obviously, what we're doing here today is hearing a report and talking about it. We're not actually making any decisions about how any of this would go forward, because, especially given the divided opinions on the boards and commissions that saw these plans, I'm sure that the rest of the public and the rest of the stakeholders would, if they thought that we were actually determining what was going to happen here today, we would have a lot more people in this room. I agree with Mr. Williams that there's a long and his, long and fascinating prehistory in this area. That is certainly something that the city has already paid tribute to in many ways, and I think there are more opportunities for that. So, again, you know, we're not, we're not determining a direction today. We can't without having publicly noticed that fact, but I just want to say that I do appreciate the work that you've done, the proposals that various people in the community have brought forward, and I hope something good comes of this. I think a lot of good has already come from the West Beach Improvements, and we've got a good foundation here, a good knowledge foundation, when there's a little more money available and it becomes time to make decisions in the future.
Mr. House?
I really do appreciate this report. I also appreciate the, looking through the notes from the different meetings, and it's just really interesting to see the range and diversity of opinion, but also to see how much interest there really is in this part of the, of the beach area. And I know, I've, I don't know if it's, it's just anecdotal, but it really does seem like the main part of the West Beach is getting a lot of use recently. I mean, just see people out there with the beach umbrellas, and maybe they're tourists, maybe they're locals, but it's getting a lot of use. There are corners and places that, that are pretty derelict, and I know right now we don't have the dredge equipment out there, but when it's there, as necessary and important as it is, it is a blight on the land. You know, it really is horrible to think that we have to have it staged there and behind even the, the snow fence or sand fence or whatever that is that we put up around it. We've got to have it, but does it have to be on the beach right there, all that for those long periods of time? And, and some of the proposals in here, which had in mind effectively putting the more, putting uses around that and effectively trying to hide it, made some sense, and I, but I just, I think that's always been really disappointing to me, that this beautiful beach and this front yard of all of California, you know, has to have that kind of a thing right there. So, but I, I just wanted to say, sort of in the line of the comments you just heard, this was, there was a beach there, right? When there was a Potter Hotel, it was the beach in front of the Potter, but it was also the beach for thousands of years right in front of Siyoktun, the village that was the, you know, a grand piece of pre-Columbian California, and before California was California, and-- And I don't think we've done enough in Santa Barbara to recognize and appreciate that. I don't think that we've sung the songs and told the tale and gotten visitors and locals alike to really, truly appreciate the maritime history, the maritime prehistory of Santa Barbara, which does include Polynesian influence and does include, you know, one of the two native seafaring tribes. And I just, I really appreciate the story circle. I think that was a great step forward. But to have a way, the canoes are going to be on the beach, taking those trips and coming back and forth. The outriggers are already there. The question in my mind is, how do those become available as a historic and a vital living historic resource, living historic resource for the public at large? How do we make that accessible to them and give them the opportunity to participate and be engaged with that history? It is a living history, but it goes back really far. And so how do we, you know, help to formalize that relationship? That's really a key part. It's a question for me, because I can see the tug of war here between the open beach that isn't, doesn't have anything on it except for the dredge equipment, and some kind of structures that float above it that can somehow protect these and make people have the opportunity, give kids the opportunity to come down and see a tomal being built, for instance. So, and I think that, Betsy, thank you very much about the wildlife. The interpretive signage, the story that we're telling really needs to tell that. And then we should be putting the native vegetation back there to help restore and make the beach more resilient. And people should be respectful of that part of it. So we shouldn't do anything that would really damage or harm that, we should be celebrating that as well. Let's just see if there's anything else I wanted to mention here. I think that's it. But let's really, let's use this as maybe a launching pad for taking, I think if the city, for instance, set out as a priority, to celebrate that prehistory of Santa Barbara and to do it at the beach where it was for all those many eons. And then we found partners to help us accomplish that, that's the way I'd like to see us produce a result, not just to do what one group or another might want, but actually to take it as a city priority, to make that little corner right in there be a way to tell those stories.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phase One, I thought was, first of all, that was really a good, well, let's back up. Thank you, staff. And I've had the pleasure of participating in this activity now for a couple of years. And obviously, working with Ms. Salee is always a pleasure and a reassurance, because she's part of the institutional history of this city, does great work. Phase One, good cherry picking, economic. Is it something that we can do with funding that we have on hand, or is this also something that is not fundable now?
Mr. Bradley.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, there is no funding identified for any of the phases. Again, if it's RDA funding, which was seed money from this, you'd have to speak to Brian Bossy about what funding could be made available. But no waterfront, no general fund money.
Do we have any sense of what Phase One entails? Was there any kind of ballpark number?
No, no costs were identified as part of Phase One or Phase Two.
Talked about low costs and high costs, and I just didn't know whether anybody had taken it a step further than low and high.
The dredgyard unfortunately will come back in the fall with our new three-year contract. So that element of Phase One will be there. Repositioning boats or structures around the dredgyard would entail having to get the necessary entitlements to do that. Maybe not boats necessarily, but I don't think that's going to do the job completely. I think if we're going to do it, we should do it in a planned, phased approach. So, no funding and no costs identified.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bossy, any compliment to that? Just no again?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member White, currently, there are no redevelopment agency funds set aside for either a Alternative A, B, Phase One, Phase Two. As you recall, or maybe you don't, but when this, the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project began, I believe funding was set aside for that on January 27, 2005, at a work session. And so, did it take a while to get here? Yes, it did. But as we all know, that is, as Mr. House stated, the front porch, the front yard of every citizen of Santa Barbara. So you can imagine how many people have viewpoints and how many people have different viewpoints on what to do down there. So currently, there is no funding available. If, in the future, a community grant, a redevelopment community grants process were requested by the Agency Board, then I would imagine, as it has in the past, these proposals would come from these various groups through that process. Again, as you know, the state continues to be in a serious budget crisis, and they've taken millions of dollars from the redevelopment agency over the past three years, $6.8 million last year, and at least another $1.4 this year. So the future and additional funding or funding freed up for things like this is, I wish I could tell you that there was, but I can't.
I understand. Okay, thank you. In any case, Phase One, I thought, did a really good job of cherry picking and providing things like a water line for boats, the outriggers and seashells and so forth to be washed off. There's a facility for the boat launch, the launching ramp, folks have that access, and that is popular. It's a real tool for local boats. That kind of thing, and the storage boxes for paddles, the racks that look good down there, those are things that, to me, they just feel like they're doable and feasible over the short term. So I'm very supportive of Phase One, as my planning commission comments in the back attest. When you look at the Halle picture in the West Beach study, I remember seeing one, it seems to me it was in Kauai rather than Maui, but, and where was it? It was not on the beach. It was on the grass, right above the beach, for the reasons that they didn't want their boats to get washed away. So there may, and we went through the real conflict a decade ago or longer over the skateboard park, intruding into our precious open space and so forth. But at least it was not on the sandy beach. So I think there's some tough decision-making that we can do as a city to go, well, where can we do this without changing the coastal plan and so forth? And maybe it comes back to us a little harder to go, this is, we could make an educational spot as part of Chase Palm Park for one or another of these facilities or both. So I really, as I say, I'm very supportive of the Phase One. I thought that was a nice job of picking through things. And on Phase Two, I think we've got some other options there that might be less confrontational with the Coastal Commission and that could accomplish these goals and of adding yet more opportunities for people to be educated and for use as well. And thank you for your study again.
Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to compliment Pat Salee on a very informative presentation, really appreciated it. I agree with Mr. White that I think Part One is a, or Phase One, or A, or whatever we're calling it, is good. I do have questions about the wisdom of putting the other, the outrigger or the app on the sand. I have nothing against recognizing the cultural heritage. I do have a problem with clutter, though, and I think the city is quickly cluttering our streets and whatever, and that they're not being maintained. We have, poor Nancy, I'm constantly emailing her about this and that, and I know we're in hard budgetary times. I think the maintenance of this could be substantial. We're witnessing a lot of vandalism and graffiti, and we have a problem with the homeless sleeping just beyond the sand dunes, and this might, so I'm concerned about that in this The Trust for Historic Preservation operates the State Park, which is the Presidio, and I think collaborating in that way would be a better opportunity for this to move forward. We have a natural history museum, maybe in conjunction with that. I understand it's not close to the water, but they can be loaded onto something to get to the water for certain times, and that would be a good place for their heritage or with other, you know, maybe the Doubletree might welcome something like this as an enhancement to their location. But I think setting the, and I never say this word right, so, Mr. Bradley, and I, the precedent setting of this, that every 501(c)(3) year volunteer group feels that it needs to be represented on our coast. And one question, they say native plants to be added. Now, is there any idea that native plants were here at all ever? Or is this introducing a native plant species to the sand?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, as we understand it, and Mr. DeForest's testimony there way back when, when the Potter Hotel, long time ago, in Burton Mound and all that, there was a beach there, and then, but there was also a seawall's recognition of wave run-up and such. So I think just using logic, there probably was just sporadic plantings along there, and one would assume they were, you know, native in derivation, although there's no way of knowing. And actually, the idea of the native landscaping between the seawall and the beachway started in the harbor master plan, and the original idea was to put grass there to sort of mirror the other side of Palm Park, where a lot of people prefer sitting on grass. Think of Guleta Beach, and the grass gets very heavily used. And the Coastal Commission, when the harbor master plan was before them, they were interested, afraid of precedent, like losing sand, and they talked about native landscaping. So that's the way the policy ended up in the harbor master plan. So the idea is just to improve the aesthetics, maybe have like sort of little boardwalk ideas like they have back east, along the Atlantic. But just to improve the ambiance of the whole area, and as to what species, you know, we never got there. That was, it was very premature, just trying to make it look better. Maybe there'd be less sand on the beachway. The other side of that is still the maintenance issue, and we heard that loud and clear.
Yes, because picking debris out of native plants is a lot different than raking the sand. And I don't think we're in a budgetary condition to bring on added maintenance to our poor parks and rec as we slash their budget. So I would support Plan A, and I would hope that there would be another place for these other structures. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think some of the council members are missing the point that the whole plan was to link Stern's Wharf with the harbor and to take advantage of those two mutual populations to go back and forth. And I think the tomal is a great idea. Mr. Ward, you had at one point an idea of an app link for the iPhone, or was it a dial-in? If you could address that. So it would be a guided tour of the song circle? Am I losing it here? Did you not talk about that at some point? Okay, could you come up just for a second? I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but describe that, because it was pretty exciting when you told me about that.
Well, we received a grant from County Arts, and we produced a podcast that goes along with the Chuyoktun Story Circle, the 20-foot ceramic tile mosaic at the Chumash History Plaza, okay? And so that's in the hands of County Arts Commission now, and so that you'll be able to dial it up on your phone or your iPod and take that tour. You know, one of the benefits of our presence at West Beach, you know, not only is it beautiful and drawing people west, but we will be there. We, the Chumash and the community at large, will be there to tell the story of all of the tomals, the tomal from rock art to 1769, to when the tomal went to sleep in 1832 and revived and...
Don't do the whole story here.
Oh, yeah.
This is available, though, on your telephone, so in the iPod. But anyway, all those, that technology can actually bring people and be used at very little expense throughout that harbor area. So I mean, I'm suggesting that because they've already thought of it, it's a great idea. And we're all up here sort of beating the dead horse. This is good stuff. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Does that mean, Frank, so you like Alternative Two?
He likes it.
You like Phase Two?
Frankie likes it, yes, okay.
Good.
Thank you. Actually, and I appreciate Councilmember Hotchkiss bringing us back to the whole purpose of what this was about, which was making that connection between Stern's Wharf and the harbor. I guess my comments are, there are two different issues going on here. One is concept, and one is funding. The funding issue, we don't really have good numbers. As Mr. White has said, we don't even have budgets of what Phase One really is, never mind Phase Two, and then the ongoing maintenance of it. And I do want to appreciate Mr. Abed in, you know, mentioning other items that wasn't on the map about lighting on the breakwater and harbor way and other areas. So it's hard to say yes to this or no to that without getting that context. But I will say that I don't think anyone can expect the city, no matter which budget we're talking about, whether it's general fund, waterfront department, or RDA, that it should be expected to be the purse for this. It seems to me that a lot of this, when it can be some form of partnership, should be. And I think there's great opportunity for that and a way for people to become more a part of this process. The, and also, I mean, the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project, I mean, yeah, it's been incredibly well-received, it looks beautiful, it's not done yet, and we need to complete that, especially with the signage going through the parking lot and over to the harbor. I mean, that's a key piece that still needs to occur, and that is funded and will happen. And the download will happen, that's part of the public art piece to there, too. So I appreciate that. So that's, the funding part is still a big question mark to me of, RDA is about to end for us in the next couple of years, the list is long, and the kind of things we want to look at. The general fund is struggling, the waterfront department has a lot of capital projects. So where are those partnerships that we can on the items, and then you move to the concept? Okay, so if we did have the money in whatever shape or form, what kind of things do we want to look at? The Phase One pieces, I mean, there's some things that are going to be there, like the dredge equipment. We're going to be dredging that beach forever for one reason or another, because the sand keeps accumulating, and we need, you know, for different reasons, we don't want to block in the harbor and all that. So in order to keep it a more inviting and welcoming area for everyone involved, if there's a way to make that nicer, the equipment that has to be there, it seems to make sense to me. And I think that's where Mr. White was going in terms of, you know, cherry picking or the Phase One pieces to it, or things that would make sense anyway to create a nicer environment of items that are already there. The, and then, so then there's the other piece. To me, the tomal house makes perfect sense in that location. The volleyball carts, not so much. I mean, if you're just looking at the map, we have plenty of other opportunities, we didn't talk about that in the presentation, but there are other places where volleyball is allowed and happens. And I want to acknowledge Mr. DeForest and Commissioner Kramer talking about not cluttering things up too much and having just wide-open spaces where you can just be and just chill out, especially right downtown, you know, well, downtown, in the major part of, right between State Street and the harbor. I mean, that's a very busy part and very heavily tourist area part. So you don't want to put too... So you don't want to put too many things in there, but really pick the kind of things where it makes sense based on our history and based on what seems to fit. And then again, as Mr. Hotchkiss says, make that connection between Sterns Wharf and the harbor. The outrigger area is another opportunity for that. It's happening there anyway. It's part of it. Is there a way just to enhance it without overbearing, having, you know, create too much structure that's overbearing? So that's a balancing act, and I want to appreciate that balancing act. So I guess, you know, I like a lot of the concept, but I still have a question about how to fund it, how to maintain it afterwards, what kind of options are available. I imagine this could be in next budget cycle year when we look at the RDA budget, you know, what does that really mean if we wanted to see what kind of funding is available? But really, I think it goes back out to the community about, are there capital opportunities, fundraising opportunities there that can partner with the city on making this happen? So I guess those are my comments there. Whoa, Mr. Hotchkiss and then Mr. House.
My understanding from the Chumash was they were going to do this on their own, which is great.
Right, but there's the whole process of the permitting, then there's the maintenance afterwards.
That's true.
I mean, it's not just a one-time, there is a one-time cost, but then, you know, how do we, is it a lease arrangement? You know, who's in control over that? I mean, there's still some funding issues beyond the initial, you know, pool you have in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Yes, and that's what I like about this report. It began to uncover a bunch of those deeper, it's not, you know, there's always unintended consequences and opportunities that pop up out of nowhere, too. And this begins to really reveal how complex some of these things will be. On the other hand, I like what the mayor's saying, and that is that we don't have to know the source of funding now. What we need to know is, what would we like to have down there? What's the direction we want to go? Because I firmly believe, just as you're saying, Mr. Hotchkiss, that there will be private sources that will show up if we then, we provide a process and a facilitated process of some sort to bring these interests together. And we should be mindful of the ongoing cost, the maintenance of effort and everything like that. But I mean, heck, the breakwater itself, that was fleshman. You've got the yacht club, you've got all these, you've got the Coast Guard came in and did their, the Navy came in and did their thing. Everybody's had a piece of this, and it wasn't the city's RDA. And when we look forward to the future, we're not going to be able to count on the redevelopment agency, but we will be able to captivate somebody's imagination, and then these things will happen. So I don't think we should be daunted by the funding right now. I do want to ask something very short-term, though. The idea, we talked about the flags, you know, the path of the flags, not just the ones out on the breakwater itself, but actually something that would semaphore, if you will, here's, this is the path to get to those shops and those restaurants. We talked, and this is very passive. We talked about the low-level lighting that just creates that sort of, in the evening, that's sort of the necklace of lights around. I mean, those are really low-scale relative, I mean, maybe there is private funding in the partnership with the businesses or something. I mean, aren't there some, like, really baby steps in this Phase One piece that couldn't be, we couldn't engage with some of those that have already been discussed and worked out, that we could just get some of those in there? Because there's mutual benefit. You help him, he's going to help us, you know, like that. I mean, can we do some, are there some just do-its in here?
Mr. Bossi?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member House, as Madam Mayor mentioned earlier, we do have a signage program that we still need to complete as part of the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project. So that's more your wayfinding mechanisms that help get people, it's the last, the last thing to get people over to the harbor area and back. And it'll likely mimic what has already been placed down around the harbor area that Mr. Bridley and his staff were responsible for a number of years ago. So we would just add upon that. That's the one last link we need to do. There is lighting that was put in as part of the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project that goes along, goes along the multimodal path there. So that's also there. So those are two things. I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, or you'd like to go a step further with it.
Well, we talked about the incremental approach and that we would be, in the next phase, after the one that we're just completing right now, that we would do those little things that would really enhance the experience for somebody who makes it all the way, at least to the end of the sidewalk, you know, on this side of Los Banos, and to really assist them in continuing in their journey. And there are some, I mean, very low-level things that even in this Phase One, and I'm just encouraging us to seize the opportunity where it exists, to fulfill on the, at least the merchant's desire in the already hardscaped area, to brighten that area, to continue to fulfill on the work that we've started here. So I'm just hopeful that we don't just think we have to put off far into the future, beginning on this Phase One thing. I mean, there's a bunch of things that if we open up the door, we could be able to pick up on them. I won't go over the list right now, but we could talk later. And maybe we just check off some of these things and do it without having the whole thing wrapped up with a bow as a great big package. You know, just pick them off. Anyway, that's all. Just kind of put it out there like that. And I think we've got partners, we have partners in the effort.
Thank you. So I think you've heard from us. Thank you very much for your presentation. There's no motion needed for today. Great, okay. I think we need to take a brief break, and then we'll take a trip to Greece after we get back, so. And actually, I meant to and didn't, we need to get a report from the ordinance committee. So, Mr. White, if you could do that right now, that would be great.
Madam Mayor, today, the ordinance committee reviewed the first draft of a spay-neuter ordinance for the city of Santa Barbara. And in came a couple of other potential drafts from the public. And the happy part of it was, I think we found a remarkable amount of agreement. I think in the county work that went on in this, it was quite contentious, and it never, an agreement never was really reached. It was always a very close split vote situation. I think we found ourselves bringing together a bunch of ideas that we're going to work on some more, but that, at least I was seeing a remarkable nodding of heads amongst people who have a wide range of opinions. So we're working on it. We're going to at least have one more crack at it before we bring it to council.
Okay, good luck with that.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 21.
New Sister City with Patras, Greece, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, providing for the establishment of a sister-city relationship with the city of Patras, Greece.
This is always part of the fun part of the job. Ms. Gunther, this is yours, I believe. And you turn on your mic there, but there you go.
Mayor and council, Takako Wakita will be introducing the new sister-city, hopefully.
Great, welcome.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Takako Wakita, Chairperson of the Santa Barbara Sister Cities Board. Currently, we have six sister cities. Those are Puerto Vallarta, Mexico; Tobago, Japan; Wehi, China; Dingo Island; San Juan, Philippines; and Cotor, Montenegro. Last year, August, in August, Cotor, Montenegro was approved as a new sister city. And then since that time, this group has been doing a great job, so busy with activities like sending a professor of Santa Barbara City College to Cotor's Connery Academy, and inviting the mayor and the delegation from Cotor, and then also inviting the Montenegro Water Polo Team at UCSB. Today, I am here to ask you to approve another new sister city, which is Patras, Greece. Over one year ago, a group of people began the work to make Patras, Greece, our new sister city, and they established the Santa Barbara Patras Sister City Advocate Group with Theoni Kondos as chair. As you know, the Greek community in Santa Barbara is very strong and active. There is a Greek church, and then also they organize this huge and very successful Greek festivals at the Oak Park every year. The Patras Advocate Group has been already participating in the sister-city program with Greek dancing group for the last year's UN Day celebration, and Greek folk musicians for the 9/11 concert next month. They have attended the board meetings many times as well. Since they fulfilled the criteria of the guidelines for establishing a new sister city, the Sister Cities Board unanimously voted to recommend Patras as our new sister city at the July 21, 2010 special board meeting. On behalf of the Sister Cities Board, I'd like to ask the city council to approve the new sister-city affiliation of Patras, whose freshness and energy will be a good addition to our sister cities program. Now, I'd like to ask Theoni Kondos to come here to explain about Patras and tell the details of their footsteps and future plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. I'm going to turn on the mic so the green light goes on. There you go.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Theoni Kondos. I'm chair of the Patras Advocate Group. Our group seeks your approval for establishment of a sister cities relationship with, between Santa Barbara and Patras, Greece. As you will see in the PowerPoint presentation that will follow my remarks, the similarities between Santa Barbara and Patras, on which we have based our proposal, are many and striking, with regard to geography, cultural orientation, climate, seismicity, higher education, and research. After our proposal was endorsed by the Sister Cities Board on July 21, and in the hope of gaining your approval, we had a display of photographs, flyers, and food products of Patras as a proposed sister city of Santa Barbara at this year's Greek festival. We were pleased that the exhibit attracted much interest and resulted in almost 100 individuals signing up for our mailing list. We are planning an event on August 29, this coming Sunday, to which we extend an invitation to all of you. And of course, we've invited all those on our mailing list, together with the parishioners of St. Barbara Greek Orthodox Church. We will be discussing plans for future events, and we will offer a light luncheon. I would like at this time to introduce Panayotis Mitroulias, Vice Chair of the Patras Advocate Group, who is a native of Patras, and will make a PowerPoint presentation which will expand on these introductory remarks. And of course, at the end of the presentation, we will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, dear members of the city council, my name is Panayotis Mitroulias, and I was born and raised in Patras. Living here in more than two years, when I first came, I felt that Santa Barbara was like my hometown. So I was so happy to join this effort from the Greek community that started almost four years ago for a sister city in Greece, and we worked hard to try to be able and present a new, good proposal for you about Patras, Greece. I would like to explain to you some of the similarities, and after the presentation, I will be more than happy to answer at your questions. So here is the Patras sister cities. This is the west, enters the west coast of Patras. I will show you more photos during my presentation. It was proposed by the Greek community of Santa Barbara, and it's compatible with Santa Barbara in culture, higher education and research, and geographical situation. This is the harbor of Patras, it's not Santa Barbara Harbor. It has a population of 180,000 people, roughly the same as that of the greater Santa Barbara area. Here is one more photo, aerial photos of Patras. It's the political, economic, administrative, and cultural center of western Greece. It's an international commercial center, and it's the connecting port to the Ionian Islands and the major Adriatic ports of Italy. It also serves as the nodal point for the entry of goods, people, ideas, and cultural influences from the European West. Here is the main harbor of Patras with all of these ships and the boats that connect Greece to Italy and the Ionian Islands. It's close to many archaeological sites, and the ancient Libya, where is the place that the Olympic Games were born, and it has an archaeological importance as a city itself. It has a new archaeological museum, which is considered to be the second big in Greece after the Acropolis Museum in Athens. It has an ancient Roman theater, a Venetian citadel that stays on the top of the city, and an ancient acropolis which has been discovered recently and is still public works there. It has a geographical situation that's combining sea and mountains. This is a Google Earth photos that shows the sea and the mountains. A Mediterranean climate with relatively warm summers, a little bit warmer than here, and mild winters. Like Santa Barbara, it used to have a great seismicity since ancient time, but we are still surviving. And like most of the Greek places, it has a culture of hospitality to visitors, and it will welcome you there. It was selected by the European Union to be the 2006 European Capital of Culture, which means that for one month, cultural events from the whole European Union countries were holding Patras, like performance arts, theaters, concerts. So it's one city every two years from the European Union that is selected for this specific purpose. And Patras was selected in 2006. It has a cultural scene with performing and plastic arts and modern urban literature, and the great cultural activity with a carnival from February to March, which is a huge carnival of parade and balls with a history of more than 180 years and about 40,000 people taking place. And the International Festival during the summer, which hosts music and theater events, takes about two months there, and it attracts tourists from the whole area. And it has also a poetry symposium every year, which is also under the universities. Here is a photo of the International Festival. This is one of the concerts that usually take place on the ancient theater that I saw you before. Some photos of the Patras Carnival, as I explained before, it's a huge, 40,000 people taking part, and huge floats. This is the carnival, the king of the parade that usually selected every year. It's also home to the largest cathedral in the Balkans, which is the Cathedral of Saint Andrew. It is considered to be equal to the mission of Santa Barbara, which is the king of mission. So this is the biggest, the largest cathedral in the Balkans. And it has, it is also an important scientific center with excellence in technical education. It has two universities, technological institutions, and a research institute. The University of Patras, which is situated close to the city, enrolls about 25,000 students, comparable to the UCSB, while the two-year technical institution enrolls about 12,000 students. Usually, the technical institution, it can be compared with a community college. The research institutes include a computer necrology institute, an industrial system institute, science park, Institute of Chemical Engineering and High-Temperature Chemical Processes, which is one of the good institutes in the whole Europe, Institute of Biomedical Technology, and the Oliki Wind Park, which is one of the first in Greece. It has a history of more than 10 years, which was something new for Greece when it started, at the top of the mountains, so that they will get the whole wind from the area. The region of Patras, it's famous for the wine-making industry. Actually, the Hagia Klaus Winery, that was established in 1861, is a symbol of the Greek wine-making, and they produce and export wines of excellent quality throughout the world. Some other activities, they... Some other activities, they include the foodstuff industries, they make some good locumia, which is some candy sugar, candy pastries, and some fruit preserves, and also they have a good agricultural and fishing sector due to the harbor and to the connection with the sea. The political situation of Patras, it has an elected mayor and a city council which serves for four-year terms. Here is Patras City Hall, which is one of the ancient buildings in the center of the city. And as all of you know, Greece is a republic with a parliamentary form of government, is a member of the European Union. As far as the sister city relations itself, we have the support from the mayor of Patras, Mr. Andreas Fouras, that sent a letter to the mayor of Santa Barbara here, nominating a member of the Patras City Council, Mr. Spiros Politis, as a conduct person. Meanwhile, Patras has formed their own group, which includes 12 city dignitaries with a mayor in chair, and they include also some vice, deputy mayors, the president of the university and of the technological institute, the chairman of the city commerce, and some other people, that they will be more than happy to work on this relationship. Our plan of action for the first year of operation, as Ms. Kandos explained to you before, we had a booth with samples of local products from Patras at the Santa Barbara Greek Festival, and we get about 100 people on our mailing list that they would like to learn more and help with this situation. And we will be having this Sunday at 11:30 a.m., a presentation followed by a Greek light lunch. Also, we have already started to establish, thinking of establishing maybe a Patras Sister Cities organization, which will be open to the public with an annual membership fee to support our plans. Patras, for the first year of operation, is happily inviting and will accommodate three to four individuals from Santa Barbara, with most expenses paid at arrival during the 2011 Patras Carnival in February. This is an invitation that we received from the Atwood Gate Group in Patras, and they will be more than happy to have you there and take you to a tour at the whole area during this event, which is considered to be like the fiesta here. The Patras Carnival in Greece is like the fiesta. Actually, it's considered to be the third-largest carnival in Europe after Venetian and Nice. Also, for the first year, we will work, and we have already been thinking about signing a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the University of Patras and UCSB. There are some professors here in the UCSB, and we are also lucky enough to have a professor at the University of Patras that was serving here as a professor in UCSB, so they have been in close contact, and they will try to work on this issue. And we will invite a small delegation of individuals from Patras in mutual fields of interest and commerce. Also, we are thinking to arrange the visit of a small delegation from Santa Barbara to Patras to start and work and make our plans how to make this relationship vivid. The funds. The Patras Sister City Organization, as I referred before, and the Greek community organizations will fund the first year of operation. Patras itself, as a city, member of the European Union, they have some European Union funds to support sister city relationship and the visit, so it's some money that they come out of their budget. And the local individuals will plan to go there and discuss and try to make this happen, will pay our own cost. We believe that this sister city relationship will be a firm, long-term, and mutually beneficial sister cities relationship, because it will help to have a scientific exchange and cooperation between the two universities. We are looking to cooperate in the field of commerce with emphasis to the wine-making industry. Cultural exchanges, festivals, art exhibits, concerts, the carnivals, summer solstice parade, fiestas, so similar activities, we could have a lot of activities. Sport exchange. Patras has a good sailing club, like here, the yacht clubs. We have sailing races there and here. The running community here, that I belong to, will be more than happy to have some cooperation with the runners in Greece too, and of course, increase in tourism. Instead of having people from Patras go and flying to LA and stay around the LA area, it will not be so far away for them to travel and spend the weekend in Santa Barbara. Closing my presentation, I would like to show you some photos that explain the similarities. Here is the harbor of Santa Barbara, and next is Patras Harbor. The waterfront with palm trees. Patras has a square with palm trees too. This concludes my presentation, and I will be more than happy to answer your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? No, I think we're all just kind of, you know, wanting to raise some, raise some of our own, save some money and get on a trip soon. But we do need to approve this if we want to, so, Mr. House.
This is, this is really exciting. I mean, this is just wonderful. I'm looking real quick in my staff report for what the recommended thing is. We have the resolution here, which we want to make as a city council, and move that resolution. But I just want to say thank you very much for the initiative. Thank you very much for your presentation. I can see, I think all of us can feel the friendship and the fellowship between our communities, and it's just going to grow. And, oh, and I saw, let's see, I saw Phase 10 for our waterfront up there at one point, and then I saw the solstice parade 180 years from now. So I...
I'll second, I'll second the motion. I was commenting that it was similar to the solstice parade, but they wear more clothes than, than they do. I'll second the motion gladly.
Great. Well, Santa Barbara and Greek community have always had such a great relationship over the years. It's nice to make this formal through the sister city relationship, and thank you for your initiative, as was stated before, and we look forward to continued connection between Santa Barbara and Patras. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, and we have a new sister. Thank you very much. Thank you. Maybe you're supposed to say, "It's a girl." I don't know. I don't know. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we have one more item, number 22.
Request from councilmembers Hotchkiss and White regarding automobile lifts.
Okay, this is a request from two councilmembers, Mr. Hotchkiss, Mr. White. Do you want to introduce this topic?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, when, this project that came up on, was it Delavina Street, which, where we had a tight vote and a heated conversation about, a brisk conversation about parking and about automobile lifts. It seemed like a good opportunity to, for us to look at that more closely and see what can work and what we might be able to find common ground on going forward in the use of various parking tools. And Mr. Hotchkiss and I have had a couple of excellent conversations about it, and I hope that, I look forward to hearing what staff has to say in terms of, we did present a list of questions to staff, and hopefully, we can get a little bit of information. I'm seeing a shocked look on our staff's face, but that's, the hope here is to find more opportunities that we all can get behind that will be providing parking for the city of Santa Barbara.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss, did you want to add anything at this point?
Yeah, I'll elaborate. My fear when we were talking about the lift parking was that it wasn't going to be used, and Bendy had some ideas that would shape that kind of parking in the future, that would make it much more practical to use, and I think that that's what we'll talk about eventually. And I was supportive of those, so, but I didn't, you know, I was really worried about developers looking at the approval that we gave on that one project, thinking, "Oh, boy, we can take off and do this kind of parking in the future," and then that would backfire, and instead of allowing two cars to be associated with a two-bedroom or whatever the place was, it would in fact would be one car, the Christmas tree lights and the, you know, the pot for the turkey up there, and then the cars out on the street. So that's the one we want to avoid. That's what we're trying to do here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. We're actually here to support, as I understood it, your decision about moving forward with an agenda item that would be fully staffed to try to address the questions that were posed in the memo from Councilmember White and Councilmember Hotchkiss. There's a significant staff commitment that would be required to respond to those questions. As you know, from the brief attachment that we provided, we attempted to give an example and an understanding of what the experience for the city has been over the last five or six years in looking at automobile lifts in conjunction with development proposals. The city is not actually and has not done any staff evaluation of the industry, the types of lifts, and the operation of those lifts as a consideration from the city's vantage point. We've simply looked at development proposals that have been submitted. We've looked at them from a performance standard and worked within the existing rules and regulations for those developments, and had quite a bit of back and forth in terms of what may have been initially offered as a proposal from a developer. Staff looked at the proposals in terms of how they were purported to function and how they would fit into the space, and the character of the area that was being proposed had, in many instances, significant requirements that had to be met in order for continued consideration of a lift. And at this point, we have gone through approval processes for three developments that did incorporate automobile lifts as part of the approved, proposed development. None of them have been actually implemented. The first one is under construction. We expect that it will be completed and in use by the end of the calendar year. So that will be our first experience with actually having an automobile lift as part of a development in the city. That's the backdrop. As, as you mentioned, there are several items that were identified as possible discussion points for council, and to actually go in and do an investigation to be able to help support that kind of discussion, as I mentioned, will take some, some real research. There are a variety of different manufacturers, a variety of different types of technologies used for automobile lifts, and so we've really depended, as I said, on what's been proposed instead of trying to craft what we would approve outside of a developer bringing it to us. So with that, I'll turn it back to you for discussion.
Okay. Why don't we hear from Mr. Williams, and we'll go, lights on this side is, are on?
Well, I just want to thank both Councilmember Hotchkiss and Councilmember White for bringing the issue up. I think it's appropriate to try to formulate some general policies and to make that more coherent about the use of automobile lifts. And I would support the idea of going forward and asking staff to answer these questions in a more substantive form. I would add one, which is sort of my answer to Councilmember Hotchkiss's fear. You know, the fear is that you will have one of the two, you know, sections provided by the garage be used for storage. Of course, the challenge, I would, I would say, is that already happens in two-car garages where people will use it, you know, one of the areas for storage, or both, I can tell you, because right now, I'm using it for storage, you know? I'm one of the people creating the problem right now. Now, that's going to be very temporary, because I've asked my campaign staff to stop using it as, as storage for, you know, literature and table, and folding tables all the time. But I guess my point being is that this already happens without lifts. And so I would ask that one other question that would be appropriate to ask would be, do we have any evidence that people that have lifts will abuse that any more than people who don't have lifts? We know that that happens already. And I guess the question is, do we have any evidence that indicates that people are using lifts are any more likely to park on the street than people who don't have lifts?
I guess my question to both councilmembers is how it relates to the general plan update. And there are obviously a lot of policies there related to parking, and whether this should be put towards the front of the priority list for us to have that conversation, because I don't, I'm a little concerned about adding additional work to staff on something that's already kind of incorporated in these policies under the general plan update, where that might be an appropriate place where that fits in. But I think, you know, given that this is here in front of us today, it might mean that that's one of the first things we talk about, as opposed to the one of the last things we talk about, and that's something we can incorporate there. So it was just a thought as I was looking through the report. And then certainly, as related to that with the adaptive plan management of the general plan, we have three, we have three projects currently going through the system that have not been implemented yet, and this might be the, one of the first items under that mechanism we can use to determine whether something's working or not working and how that relates to our policies. So those are two thoughts there. Mr. White, did you want to?
Yes, I would like to appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, as always, I'm sensitive to our staff, the limitations of staff resources, and wanting to focus your attention where, in the most strategic ways possible. So I want this work to be complementary to, to the general plan, to, that this is a complement to, to Plan Santa Barbara. And I'm, as we've discussed in a couple of Plan Santa Barbara meetings, I'm looking for proverbial common ground, not proverbial, common ground, for places where we can, we can, most of us, five of us or more, can, preferably all of us can say, this is a reasonable way to go forward with parking solutions. I've indicated that I'm supportive of a broad range of approaches to parking. Mr. Hotchkiss and I have talked about this a little more, where, for example, off-site parking is something that I'm supportive of in terms of developing higher density or medium and higher density residential use, and having some of the parking be aggregated into a structure or a place anyway that's nearby and not necessarily on-site. That's an example of something that, to me, I've, as I've watched development and participated in the decision-making, I've seen as a potentially useful tool going forward. The lifts, to me, also seem, of course, these three projects have suggested it, suggested lifts, and in the dialogue that Mr. Hotchkiss and I have had, out has come the idea of, how could this be more convenient, and yet the use of lifts go forward? And one answer is that there be basically three levels, the hole dug, and then one, when one uses the space, one presses one button to open the garage door and presses the other button to determine whether you go up or down with the, with the lift. So there is, and I could see that on smaller lots where you can't go underground, on a lot less than 20,000 square feet, you start losing the ability to go underground with a ramp. You can only, you just don't have the space to do a ramp, so, but that may be a place where you could dig a hole and make, make use of that underground space and yet have a more compact development. So that's an example of a situation which might work. Going forward, I'm looking for more creative ways to, to provide parking that more of us can, can, can get behind. So those are, those are a couple of ideas that have been generated out of Frank and my conversations.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, Bendy's absolutely right. So what I would like staff to do, is going to take some time, is to research where are these being used, if they're being used anywhere, and what's the effect? You know, it doesn't have to be an experiment on our part. We can find out stuff on paper and save ourselves a lot of time and money. And developers, too. I mean, if it doesn't work, great. If it does, terrific, we'll find out. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Mr. White and I both share a number of years on the Planning Commission, where we learned that a fundamental rule of development is that parking drives everything, pretty much. You have, you pretty much start with the parking, and then you design the project...
You have, you pretty much start with the parking and then you design the project around that requirement. And the idea that we would have tools in the bag that we could use, that developers could use to meet requirements that we have, that would allow them more flexibility with the site to assist them in meeting other requirements that are equally as important, having to do with livability, having to do with appropriateness in the neighborhood and compatibility, size, bulk, scale, all the rest, is really intriguing to me. One of the things that, when I read the staff report, that was, actually, I was kind of surprised to realize that what I was reading was just, it's, the way that the staff looked at each of these projects was so mundane. It was so basic to what you do. Well, how do you turn when you get out of it? How do you get in? How do you get out? What's the, it was just the same old thing. It was just, well, how does it work? You know, make it practical. It's not a gimmick. You've got to still park the car. You've got to find, you know, so it was that kind of stuff. And I think, let's see what the word was here, that the staff report said, "Performance standard approach" is what you call it, right? Performance standard. Maybe just take a moment and talk to us about that, the idea that you would be looking, I guess, at the result, the outcome, right? Isn't that how that works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember House. The notion is just as you described it, given the particulars around the lot, the size, the location, the terrain, the type of development, all of those are the factors that go into looking at how a proposal that involved a lift might work for a particular application. And there are a variety of different types of technologies associated with how lifts can be incorporated. In fact, I think in the most recent one, it's actually a custom-designed lift because the limitations on the space were so constrained. But the type of vehicle that it has to be able to support and the turning movements and the access to be able to use it all depend on what type of lift it is and what it takes to be able to utilize it. So they're very, they're very site-specific and I think that would be a challenge in being able to try and provide some more really detailed information for you to consider as a council discussion for guidance on how lifts might fit into a citywide development toolkit. It really is an evolving technology. They're under development in a lot of different areas, particularly in other countries. In Japan and Europe, they've been in place for a number of years, in some places in the United States as well. How much and what types of communities, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head because we haven't, as I said, gone out and tried to really assess the industry. But the performance aspect of it is really the key regardless of any kind of yes or no approval of these, you know, if it was a decision on the part of the council that you really didn't want to see lifts, for whatever reason, they're just not compatible with a development approach that you're comfortable with for the city of Santa Barbara. That's one thing. If you're saying that, or you came to a determination that lifts are a reasonable thing to have in the toolkit, it would still be the obligation of a developer when they came in to be able to demonstrate how a proposal that included an auto lift would fit into their development proposal and the site and the application of the access requirements to utilize it.
Great. And that, which is what we do anyway.
Correct.
I mean, with every proposal. So I really, I like that approach. And if you just take a minute with Google and go and put parking lifts in there, it's amazing. It's this tropical fish, you know, every different kind and some of the, there's ones for bicycles, they're all automatic, you know? You put your card in, zoom, your bike goes down into some great hole somewhere and zoom, pops right back up when you're ready to go. It's just amazing. But I think, for now, this little sort of step-by-step approach, you know, take each one, look at it. I'm sure we're going to develop our own database. I don't mind having, you know, hearing back from you and maybe you can send us information or we can get information about other things you see elsewhere that are of interest. But I think that each individual proposal is going to be coming forward and that's where you get to do the heavy lifting of working it out with them, to be sure that it's going to work. Does it make, does it work?
Thank you, Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember when the project was approved on Delavina, which I did not support, the word used by people approving it was "experiment." And I don't mind experimenting on certain things, but this is sort of, you can't go back after something is in concrete or so firm. And I think the concerns were pretty valid. I remember one of the things that really concerned me was the size of vehicles that could be supported with the lift. We have a lot of people who are in business that require trucks or SUVs. And when you got to the newer antennas sticking out, even the little bitty cars weren't fitting on there. So that's a great concern and I think we have plenty of examples around the city of underparked neighborhoods. And I can't imagine, if you took a poll by the residents, who is willing to give up 50% of the parking on their streets? I think you would find that some of the neighborhoods who have ample parking and you see the trees in the homes, that it adds to the value of their property and that the city should not do anything to diminish the quality of the city or of the neighborhoods. And I'm imagining that, well, let me just make one comment. I believe that one of the homes that got this or was approved was an old Victorian and in order for their project to go forward, they needed this one parking place or, and so this creative way was used. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Council Self, actually, on that property, there was a Victorian, but they added condos in the back, so it was actually an intensification of the use on the property. That they added, they needed the additional parking.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I would imagine if this concept is to go forward, that we would have an ordinance to be written. And I think it would be important to have backup generators in case there's a fire or a loss of power and people needed to get out. I think that also, in part of that, that we should require a certain car. Okay, we can have one little car space, but certainly then we need, you know, a bigger, more family-friendly kind of vehicle be accommodated. So I hope those things would be considered, but my first point about experimenting, we have a few things, let's see how they work, let's investigate other communities and see how that goes. And I do empathize with what Councilmember Williams said about garages filled with stuff. And, but I believe, isn't there an ordinance about that, that when, and I'm not signaling you out, it's a temporary thing, I get it, but, but about, it's temporary, but don't people who can't...
A lot of us are going to be in trouble.
...park in their garages, that the city can come in and say, "No, the vehicle has to be in there and you can put your stuff under a tarp outside." Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Chair, Council Self, yes, the parking areas that are designed to be the required parking are required to be accessible and available for parking.
Okay. I'm sure a lot of us don't comply. I do. But, you know, thank you.
Okay, I see no more lights on. What I'm hearing is information is good. Maybe get some general information about what else is out there, but in terms of a policy direction, I think we want to incorporate that in the general plan process. Is that, without, I think, I heard, I heard some concern, myself included, about not wanting to add too much extra staff work here. Oh, Mr. Francisco's light just went on. So I haven't heard from you. I guess, I guess we need to give direction to staff about something. Mr. Armstrong, were you about to say something?
I was just going to say, I think, the concern that staff has is, is we've received three of these proposals in the last six years, of which only one is under construction. And each one has been unique to the site and it's with different manufacturers. And we're concerned about spending a lot of time developing a global policy when you're still going to have to be site-specific. I think we can, you know, find some information generally about how these things work and provide it to you. I think in terms of the priorities for, you know, how we look at land use, you know, coming up with a policy for things that don't happen very often is probably not the best use of our time, at least to spend a lot of time on it. Because even if we brought you a policy and you spent a lot of time debating it, we're still going to have to do the individual assessment of each project based upon the site characteristics.
Okay. Mr. Casey, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just piggyback on that and say, I also wouldn't want to put it off into the Plan Santa Barbara process. Just looking at the policy issues that we would want to focus on implementation, I don't think this would elevate up to a top priority. So I wouldn't want to set up a false expectation that we'd jump on it as part of Plan Santa Barbara either.
Okay. Mr. Francisco?
I was going to say exactly those things, so I don't really have too much to add. I think we shouldn't do any harm. And this is something that comes up so rarely and who knows, after a few actual experiments with it, it may never come up again. So I don't want to burden staff with it and I don't see it as being a general plan policy level.
Okay, then. I'll retract that part of my statement of what I heard, because I guess I, anything else from, okay, I think, thank you very much. Any council member committee assignment reports?
I'll mention one last week. Santa Barbara SB CAG, County Association Governments, on our agenda was the issue about maintenance of effort with Measure A. This is the level of funding that each city in the county has to provide of discretionary funds before it can receive Measure A funds. And the way the ordinance was originally set up when we passed it in 2008 was creating pretty much a big financial burden with the change in the economy. So there was a unanimous support from the Measure A Oversight Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee to make some changes to the ordinance to allow for an average over five years as opposed to just the 2008 number, which was the highest for everyone in the county. For us, it was close to $9 million and to really look at the economy in general and, you know, keep, keep the level playing field there. So that initiative, that process has started. What that would mean for us and what's being proposed is that our maintenance of effort would be more in line to around $6 million. So that, I think, makes a big difference. The penalty for not reaching your maintenance of effort means that the city, we would not receive any Measure A funds whatsoever. So I think the idea was that would be a detriment to the taxpayers who voted for this and are paying the sales tax not to receive the funding. So that was the process. So that is ongoing into the next couple of months and it needs a two-thirds majority from SB CAG for it to pass. Anything else? Mr. Williams?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that yesterday, the Neighborhood Improvement Program Update and Site Visits was scheduled during the regular COME meeting. So I did my duty with the Joint Powers Agency and was there instead, the COME and CCRB meeting. And one of the more interesting parts of the meeting during CCRB was a presentation by Dr. Garza on the genetics of steelhead and rainbow trout. And this is important because we are under the obligation of the biological opinion as one of the South Coast Water Agencies to enhance and restore the species on the San Andres River because of the presence of the dam that, you know, we built. So the interesting thing is that there is very little what they call retrogression, which basically they mean hybridization between hatchery fish that are stalking the lake, which are native of Idaho, and are rainbow trout and not local, and the local steelhead rainbow trout. And that's, and that's true both below and above the dam. And important because that means that if there was ever interbreeding between the native fish above the dam and south of the dam, that we basically have a lot more genetic diversity to recover the species with. And so that's a good thing. And it also means that the presence of hatchery fish in the lake may not be as much of a danger as some feared for native steelhead in the Lower San Andres.
Thank you. I also want to thank everyone with the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force for the site visit yesterday. I thought it was, well, very informative and helpful for us to see all the projects around there. So, item number 23.
Closed session for conference with labor negotiator.
Okay, and we won't have anything to report out from there, so we'll adjourn from closed session. And we have the next couple of weeks off, so we'll see you in September.